Thank you, Warren. I blindsided you with that, so you handled it well. Good job. Let's see, we could have Clerk Segrist, please call the roll.
Trustee Anthony.
Present.
Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Trustee Graham Hudek.
Evening.
Let the record reflect Clerk Segrist is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Trustee Snyderman.
I am here this evening.
Supervisor Williams.
Hello. Call for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have two sets of minutes. Could I have a motion to approve both sets of minutes from August 13th and August 20th, 2019, meetings?
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the minutes as presented for both meetings.
Support.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now would be the time in our agenda for any citizens' non-agenda items. If you're here and would like to make comments on an item that's not on the agenda, now would be the time to make those comments. Mr. Miller?
George Miller, sir. Couple of questions I have. I'd like to know if we can get some street sweeping done from Sheldon Road, from Palmer Road going north to Joy Road. Some of the sewers are over, strange sewers are over covered with dirt, they're curbed and there's a lot of dirt on it. Same way with Sheldon, from Palmer Road going north to Joy Road. Also, I'd like to address one issue. I believe, I stand corrected maybe, possibly. I'd like to know if there's a strength test being done for...
I'm sorry, strength test for?
For the roads. Pump test. Is there being one done? I believe there was one in the meeting and it wasn't being done.
That's my knowledge it is, but I'll get confirmation for you.
The other thing is, and Police Department, I'd like to be addressed on the... There's a witness form, and I believe that form doesn't say witness on it anywhere, or a witness statement. I'd like to know if that can be corrected. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Is there any additional public comment? Is there any additional public comment? Please, sir. And as in the past, we'd ask that you state your name, address, and then limit comments to three minutes, and it's not a requirement, you state your name and address, but we do a request for the record.
Good evening. My name's Matthew Feems, 2430 Brookfield Street. Two comments. One, do we, we have GFLs, our waste hauler. Are they actively recycling? I've heard that they're, they may not be actively recycling. I was just wondering if we could find out.
There's, there is a pending study session that I think we're headed towards end of September for a study session. We're gonna go into full detail. But if you want to know what's happening in the recycling markets throughout the country in Michigan, go to Google and you'll find out that, yes, there are items that are definitely still being recycled, and some that we think are, that maybe aren't. So it's all publicly available through Google, but we're gonna have our own study session to not only go into specifically the country, the region, but also...
Okay. When's that meeting?
Jade, we're headed towards end of Sept- October 1st. Okay, alright. That's where we're headed right now.
Alright, thank you. And the Lily Bridge is moving along. We got the Beams set on Friday, so we're a little bit closer.
Thank you. Keep doing that. We appreciate that. Any additional public comment? Seeing no additional public comment. Treasurer Slavens, could we have a motion to pay the bills?
Mr. Supervisor, I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Second.
Those in favor of paying the bills again this month, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, the bills will be paid. Now, if I could please have Officer Matt Roberson join me at the... Okay, so tonight, we are obviously recognizing Mr. Matt Roberson, who's being recognized tonight for his promotion to the rank of Sergeant with the Canton Police Department. Matt started with the department as an officer in 2006. In his new position, Sergeant Roberson will serve as a platoon supervisor, providing leadership, training, and mentoring to the road patrol officers assigned to his shift. He will also be responsible for administration, assignments, special projects under the leadership of his designated shift commander. Matt is joined here tonight with, by his wife Melissa, and their children Warren, who helped us with the pledge this evening, as well as Russell, Benjamin, Isabella, Brooklyn, and Mickey. Wow, that's a mouthful. Good job, guys, mom and dad. Congratulations, Sergeant. And you already have a badge on, so, well done. Would you like to say anything, sir? Thank you, guys. Congratulations.
May, Mr. Supervisor, can I make a motion that we read that into the record?
Support.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now, if we could ask Clerk Segrist to read the consent calendar as a single item.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the Board adopt the consent calendar as presented. Item C1, consider approving the resolution establishing authorized signatories for MERS, contracts, and service. Item C2, consideration of second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 46, Article 4 of the Canton Code of Ordinances to update the fireworks ordinance to comply with the changes to state law. Item C3, consideration of second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 46, Article 8 of the Canton Code of Ordinances to update the ordinance prohibiting minors from using alternative nicotine products to comply with the changes to state law.
Or, those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item G1, consider approval of the preliminary site plan for a non-village site condominium.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the Board adopt the following resolution for the preliminary site plan approval for a non-village detached condominiums. Whereas, the project sponsor has requested approval of the preliminary site plan for a non-village detached condominium site condominium located on the southeast corner of Geddes and Denton Roads on the tax parcel listed. And whereas, the Planning Commission reviewed the site plan and made a recommendation to approve the request for site plan approval. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan, does hereby approve the request of the petitioner to approve the preliminary site plan for a non-village detached condominiums on the tax parcel listed, subject to any and all applicable state and local development regulations.
In terms of background, the project includes 40 and 50-foot wide building pads for ranch-style homes. The larger the two proposes a first-floor house plan of about 1,700 square foot. The access to the project is from Denton Road, which is, was recently widened to a three-lane cross-section with a traffic signal at the intersection of Geddes and Denton. Substantial landscaping is provided along Geddes and Denton, and the internal street lighting is proposed, is as proposed. A future clubhouse pad is being reserved, which will be reviewed later as a separate plan. The storm management systems is primarily underground in the center of the site with a small pond area near the northwest corner of the site. The building of the project will integrate well with the detached condos under construction in Crystal Village immediately to the south. We have with us this evening Mr. Mark Mahajan of Fairway Engineering. In the event there are any questions, Anne Marie from Planning, I don't know if there's anything you'd like to add?
No, as you said, I mean Denton Road's been widened to three lanes, and there's a traffic signal at Geddes and Denton. And it was stated also that the project meets all the design standards under the condo ordinance. So there wasn't a lot of discussion on this one.
Additional Board questions or comments?
Can it be any sidewalks?
Mr. Anan, maybe you could address. Or Mr. ...
Hi, sorry, Mark couldn't be here today, but I'm the project sponsor, so, yes, there will be sidewalks.
Sidewalks on Denton?
Yes, that was part of the site plan.
And Geddes?
Yeah, it was part of the site plan, I think, to get approval was to go all the way around.
There is a picture in the packet. I don't know. You can put that up.
Jade, sometimes, are you connected? Can you bring up the...? No?
No, I'm not.
Not working? Okay.
What page are you on, Anne Marie?
Shows the sidewalks. This is page 42 out of 386 of the packet.
Forty-two, you said?
Forty-six.
Forty-six?
Forty-four shows some more of the details.
Forty-four is where I was looking.
These are, so these are site condos. So it's private roads? Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend the roads meeting last week. Did you guys talk about site condos and the issues with those at all? Just think at some point, we might want to discuss the money to fix and replace private roads, and where it comes from. Not township money, but how...
All from the association dues and their responsibility from the...
And are they, when, will there be an association set up? And, and will there be any money, or recommended money, set aside on an annual basis to, for roads? Okay, so that will be discussed with the association when it's turned over to them?
That's correct. And then the, I believe the bylaws are in process right now, so that'll be part of it as well.
Yeah, I recommend, because we've had, you know, a lot of roads, site condos over time, where they didn't have the money to repair their roads. And I think we need a little bit of an education process for those types of developments. Thank you.
These are adjacent to Chris, is it Crystal Park or Cr- there's a development in back of you?
That's correct.
Are they, your development's similar to those?
Yes, that's correct.
But they're not gonna be connected, I read?
Yeah, that was, at the time of approval, we were negotiating with them to try to get that connection made. It's, it was put on hold at the time, but it's, it wasn't taken out of consideration for future.
I think they, they didn't want to...
Not at the time, no.
They didn't want to what? I'm sorry, Joe.
Pack the two together. They wanted sep- kept separate.
Unfortunate, okay. Thank you.
Questions or comments? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. A single resolution or... Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Consider approval of special land use for McMahon Helicopter Services.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the Board adopt the following resolution for the approval of the special land use for an airport-related business for McMahon Helicopter Service. Whereas, the project sponsor has requested special land use approval for an airport-related business for McMahon Helicopter Service on property located on the west side of Lily Road, north of West Warren Road. And whereas, the Planning Commission reviewed the request and special land use criteria and voted seven to zero to recommend approval. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan, does hereby approve the request for an airport-related business for McMahon Helicopter Services on the tax parcel numbers listed, subject to all applicable local and state requirements.
Support.
The applicant is proposing to move from the existing location on Rhonda Drive and will build a new 19,000-square-foot facility on Lily adjacent to the airport, which would have an access agreement from Metitol for the business. McMahon facility includes a 15,000-square-foot hangar for helicopters and a 4,000-foot administrative office area. The conceptual site plan demonstrates that they can meet all of the required design standards in the zoning code for the building and site improvements. And I believe Jeff Goulet presented this project to us previously. I don't know if it's part of a study session, but we've seen this before. Are there any, we have with us this evening Casey Leach from Sedoc Group. If there are any questions from the Board, are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, and easy night for you, sir. Have a good one. Looking forward to you expanding your business. G3. Consider final approval of the site plan for Park Creek Condominium and approved, approval of a long-term maintenance agreement for a pedestrian bridge.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the Board adopt the following resolution and the approval of the final site plan for Park Creek of Canton Site and detached condominiums. Whereas, the project sponsor has requested approval of the final site plan for Park Creek of Canton Site and detached condominiums on property located on the northwest corner of Beck and Geddes Road. And whereas, the Planning Commission reviewed this final site plan for Park Creek of Canton and voted seven to zero to recommend approval of the request as it meets all site design guidelines of the zoning and condominium ordinances, and is consistent with the planned development agreement. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan, does hereby grant preliminary approval of the site plan for Park Creek of Canton Site and detached condominiums on the tax parcel numbers listed as proposed, subject to any and all applicable state and local development regulations.
Support.
And, wow.
Furthermore, yeah, it's a very long, very long detail, yeah.
Should this be done in the form of two motions? Yeah.
Break it up. I mean, it's a, it's a very...
I apologize.
Long, very detailed motion as it's presented. You can break it up.
Okay.
In terms of a summary, the applicant proposes to locate 75 site condominiums and 91 detached condos as an active adult complex. Total of 166 residential units on approximately 89 acres located at the northwest corner of Beck and Geddes. This property was previously part of the Charing Cross Plan Development District that has since expired. Road connections will be made to Charing Cross as well as Geddes and Beck Roads. The project sponsor proposes to maintain 9.3-acre park at the northwest corner of Beck and Geddes Road, and 38.1 acres of general common open space, for a total of 57% open space. The park includes a fitness area, playground, a park trail, and roadway landscaping along the edges of the park. Sidewalks will be installed along Geddes and along Beck Road north, connect with the sidewalk, the entry to Charing Cross condominiums. Including a pedestrian bridge crossing at Fowler Creek, which was discussed in the motion. MI Homes is also proposing to improve the intersection of Beck and Geddes by adding a left-turn phase signals to manage the traffic at the intersection in addition to any lane improvements normally required by Wayne County at each of the entrances as part of the first phase. Final approval of the planned development and preliminary approval of the site plan was granted by the Township Board back in May, on 28th, 2019. And we have with us this evening Nikki Jeffries from MI Homes. If anybody has any questions, welcome back, Nikki. We've seen this a few times now. It's starting to mature and get a little more detailed.
Go ahead. I just have a question about the pedestrian bridge. I couldn't find, if it was determined, the, what the, what kind of a bridge we were putting in?
It's like a con-span bridge. It's over the creek. It's, it's in the engineering plans. It'll, it's one of those ones that's like prefabricated and made by Contech. So it'll be a big span bridge that covers the whole creek in one span.
So a question for Wendy. So now we're taking on responsibility for this bridge in terms of maintenance. Do we have any other similar bridges in the township that we know approximately the cost of maintaining it?
I'm not aware of what other bridges we may have at this point in time. We have some along the trail, but I, those are so new, I'm not sure what the cost of those are.
Can I speak for one second? We, we are being asked to execute an agreement with the township so that our HOA will be paying for the maintenance. But the county requires that you guys pass a resolution, that you'll maintain it, and then we're gonna have an agreement that we will be maintaining it. So you technically won't be responsible when it's all said and done.
Because I remember that before. Wouldn't we do that all together then, rather than doing it separate? I mean...
I can check with Jeff, but I think that would be part of the development agreement as opposed to the site plan approval?
Basically, the, the county requires this as a part of a permit, and they won't let us move forward until you guys pass this resolution, which I think is pretty typical when there's sidewalks and stuff. Obviously, this is more of a, more, more than just a sidewalk, since it's a bridge. But we will not be allowed to, Jeff won't let us move forward without this agreement being executed. So we, we've been working on it. I think the, I think him and the township engineer were working on, on the agreement. So we are more than willing to execute it. We know what's happening.
Then your bylaws will require that certain funds go towards the...
There's gonna be, there's language in our, that's gonna be in our master deed stating that, that the HOA is responsible for the maintenance of the bridge.
Additional, go ahead, Mark. Stephen?
So will this mean contiguous sidewalk? Or is there still a gap for the part that you don't own on, on Geddes Road?
We're, the plan is to maintain, still put a sidewalk in. It, it will be in the right-of-way. It won't be, it will, but it will connect the whole section there along...
Like the subdivision to the nor- or development to the north and the development to the west? And through the corner, it'll go all the way, even though you don't own that little bit?
Just one little piece. We don't own along Geddes, yeah.
Okay.
But we're putting in sidewalk across there.
Oh, you are?
Yep.
Interesting. Okay, that's really cool. And then the playground, will that also be maintained by the HOA afterward?
Yes, it will.
Okay. I guess I have the same comments about the roads and having enough money put in every year by the HOA to eventually repair roads when necessary.
Yeah, we definitely take that into account when we put together a budget for the year and set aside money for that.
And that they know that it's for that, because sometimes they may end up spending it on something else. All right, thank you so much.
No further comments or questions. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a second.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the Board adopt the following resolution, the approval of agreement for long-term maintenance on the pedestrian bridge for the Park Creek of Canton condominium. Whereas, the developer has applied to the Wayne County Department of Public Services for installation of a pedestrian bridge within the Beck Road right-of-way with respect to Park Creek of Canton condominium, the project. And whereas developers' application for right-of-way and stormwater construction approval has been assigned, Wayne County Review Number R19-306. And whereas developer has entered into a planned development district agreement with the Charter Township of Canton, which includes the requirement for the developer to provide long-term maintenance of the pedestrian bridge at the project, which plan has been tentatively approved by the county pending issuance of this agreement and has been accepted by the Charter Township of Canton. And whereas Charter Township of Canton has agreed to assume jurisdiction and accept responsibility for long-term maintenance of the pedestrian bridge at the project in perpetuity. And now therefore be it resolved, the Charter Township of Canton assumes jurisdiction over the, and accepts responsibility for long-term maintenance of the pedestrian bridge in the Beck Road right-of-way at the project pursuant to the Wayne County Review Letter, the plan, and the right-of-way construction approval issued by Wayne County. And to the extent allowed by law, the Charter Township of Canton hereby agrees to indemnify, save, harmless, and defend Wayne County, its Department of Public Services, its officials and employees against any and all law claims, suits, and judgments of every name and description arising out of the construction of the proposed pedestrian bridge in the Beck Road right-of-way adjacent to the, at the project. This agreement to indemnify, hold harmless, and defend must not be construed as a waiver of any governmental immunity by Wayne County or the Charter Township of Canton, including each entity's elected and appointed officials and their respective employees as provided by statute or court decision. Further, that approval has been granted by the Township Board of Trustees, authorizing Township Supervisor to execute on behalf of Charter Township of Canton the permits for maintenance of the pedestrian bridge within the Beck Road right-of-way issued by Wayne County.
Those in favor of the second motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. If Wayne County spent as much money in legal agreements like that that mean nothing, and put that money into the roads, roads would probably be in better conditions.
Assuming our legal counsel is okay with all that, right?
But Jade's gonna make sure that we expedite the second phase of the agreements before we approve the next phase, obviously.
Yep. Thank you guys very much.
Really long-winded.
All right, Mr. Supervisor. This is gonna be in the form of two motions. I move to introduce Ian Hold the first reading of the proposed conditional zoning amendment to Appendix A zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the Charter Township of Canton as provided in the attached ordinance.
In terms of a summary. Request for proposal changes zoning from C3 regional commercial to R6 residential, single-family attached residential and C3 regional commercial districts, subject to the Statement of Conditions and Conceptual Development Plan, which reads Policy 1.52A of the Future Land Use Element of Comprehensive Plan Established Guidelines for the Mixed Use Designation for Michigan Avenue Corridor. The policy states the mixed-use designation along the north side of Michigan Avenue between Sheldon Road and the ITC corridor shall allow for consideration of light industrial, LIR, O1, regional commercial, C3, mid-rise, MRD, or R6, single-family residential zoning, as long as the R6 zoning is not exclusive and is part of the mixed-use development. The request would change the zoning of 48 acres of the subject property, R6, to R6, while remaining 14.6 fronting Michigan Avenue would remain C3. The 48 acres would allow up to 250 single-story apartment units and up to 66.5, I'm sorry, 66,550,000 square foot of commercial use. Again, 66,550 square foot commercial use. The entire area would be subject to the proposed Statement of Conditions, Conceptual Development Plan. Integration of the two uses has been provided via vehicular and pedestrian connections in order to meet the mixed-use policy objectives. The Statement of Conditions also restricts the use in R6 and C3 districts and offers to pave Morton Taylor Road, provides a landscape berm along Morton Taylor, along with sidewalks along both of the road, and provides for the internal pedestrian connections between the residential and commercial areas as a method of integrating the uses to meet the mixed-use criteria. At the R6 is not exclusive. Now, we've been talking about this project for many, many months. It goes back to when we looked at the master plan. There's also interest in the property behind that is currently owned by the developers and would like to try to preserve by Morton Taylor at the trailhead. So there's a lot of moving parts with this project, and it shouldn't be new to anybody. And I don't know, Anne Marie, is there anything you want to add from a planning perspective?
No, Jeff had, like you said, Pat, that Jeff basically went over talking about the zoning and how it did meet the master plan, so there was no, no other discussion around that, because like you said, we had seen it before.
This, this evening, representing the projects. Let me go back down one. There you go. Yeah, I lost it, here we go.
Good evening, I'm Richard Bat with Redwood.
There you go, Richard's here with Redwood, please.
You're used to seeing Kelly, I'm sorry for the downgrade.
That's all right, you're fine, are there any questions, comments that Richard may add, answer for us? Yes, please, Stephen.
The buildings, the commercial buildings potentially, what, how many stories would those be, or is that not determined at this time?
Well, I, I think there's a, there's a, two different groups here, one that currently in owners are gonna maintain a commercial, so I'm gonna have them speak for themselves rather than me speak for them.
Please, sir, if you'd introduce yourself.
Thank you, good evening, my name is John Gaber, I'm the attorney for the, for the current property owners, who have owned the property for many, many years and tried several different development plans to, to bring this, this property to development, fruition, and, you know, we're, we're proud to have Redwood with us and to present this proposal with you this evening. To address a specific question, now, now this is, this is a mixed use development where we have the, the residential component pretty solidified right now in terms of what it's gonna be pursuant to the concept plan, you've seen in the concept plan, you know, one iteration as to what the commercial frontage could look like along, you know, along Michigan Avenue, now, that's not set in stone yet because of the fact that we do not have the commercial tent, tenanted, at this point in time, what, you know, we've been out, we've, we've talked to different potential users, tenants, occupants of these, these sites, and essentially, what we found out, what we've learned is that they're not interested in committing until we have the rooftops here, until Redwood is in, until Redwood is 100% committed, and we'll have 250 residential units put in, so it's kind of the chicken and the egg scenario here, so it's a little bit difficult, to answer your question, we, we're not sure if it'll be one-story or two-story, it'll be retail, commercial permitted uses under the C3 zoning, but as, as part of the process, we're not only imposing the conditions on the property that are part of the conditional rezoning, but we're also going to be subject to a planned development agreement that's gonna come before you at a future time, and then obviously a site plan, so we will have to come back in front of you with any proposed commercial development to, to essentially obtain approval for that, so unfortunately, I can't answer, tell you exactly what's gonna be there now, but, but that's the plan, and that's the way that the township is protected and has a review rights over what's gonna go in there.
Thank you.
I think that's pretty consistent, consistent with what we're seeing in Cherry Hill Village, is everybody's kind of waiting for all the housing to be completed before they finish out the commercial that is there.
Go ahead, Stephen.
I was just gonna, you mentioned the parcels behind and near the trail and stuff, this has nothing to do with the swap that we once talked about?
No, no, this is just allowing them to move forward with.
Okay, but is that a different group that has the parcel?
It's all intertwined, so there'll be, there'll be another board action that you'll be seeing.
Okay, great, thank you.
Some of this, I, I mean, I found some verbiage buried about putting paths between commercial and residential, is that something you're considering based on what I've read?
So, we, we have a, a preliminary site plan where we're, we're very conscious of the fact that the township wants connectivity between this, and really, and connectivity really from all the way back from Michigan Avenue back to the trailhead in the park behind us, so we have integrated walking paths and wa, water features, and also wa, is, is somebody, I think the supervisor mentioned earlier, so sidewalks on both sides of, of Morton Taylor back to the trailhead, so we're, we're trying to integrate the whole thing back to the park.
Serving as much green space as possible as you're doing that?
If you look at page 168, Emery, is, it shows also on the eastern portion of the properties where there's, there's a river, or the, the water comes up through the center there, and so they're preserving that too, so you're kind of gonna...
Stormwater management area. Is there anything other than the stormwater management area?
Well, there's, there's a county drain through the, through the eastern portion of the property that over time has turned into a creek or a stream or, you know, natural feature, we're, we're preserving that, the area around it and a walking path next to it.
Oh, I see the county drain is met, 169, okay, thank you, then I, you do have a house here, one of the concepts.
Yes. It, it, for those who are not aware, I, I assume you are, but we do have another neighborhood in Canton Township, we love Canton Township, that's why we're back, and, you know, you can drive through, I mean, that's essentially what we're gonna build here, there, there are some elevation variations because we're putting in some, a little bit larger, newer product, but, you know, we, we already are in the township, and, and happy to be here.
I think, I just, I just want to speak in favor of, of the motion, I, in a lot of ways, a lot of our zoning decisions over the years have been kind of centered around the automobile, and I think that the future of Canton is going to see districts like this where you see a combination of residential and commercial, so I am in favor because it's a livable, walkable community, fits to a lot of what we, the work we did when we talked about the goals, and, and where we see the community going forward.
No further comments, questions, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, second motion, all of them.
Mr. Supervisor, I, I move to table for consideration the conditional zoning amendment for a second reading on September 10th, 2019.
Second. Those in favor of the second motion presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you guys.
Right, thank you.
Item G5, consider entering into contracts with subdivision HOAs for the 2020 and 2021 residential road millage program.
All right, Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the Canton Township, approve Canton Township to enter into contracts with the following subdivisions for the 2020 and 2021 residential matching program, Royal Point, Hidden River Estates, Huntington Place 2, Savannah Point, Stonegate, Canton Country Acres, Kimberly Meadows, Windsor Park, Northwoods Place, Fairways West, Franklin Palmer, Forest Brook, Fifth Brookside, Sunflower Village, Pickwick Village, Buckingham Place, Willow Homes, Wilshire Estates, Century Farms, Glengarry Village 1, Central Park 2, Nowland Estates, Pheasant Woods, Salem Manor, Central Park 1, Mayfair Village, Coppelstone Ridge, Woodwind Estates, and Cherry Knoll.
In terms of a summary, the township has commenced the residential matching program under the new road millage, as laid out in the communications with the community, 30% of the millage funding will go towards residential programs, which is approximately $1,652.61 per year, based on the submittals of the first 29 subdivisions who submitted, can be accommodated and allocated at this point within the 2020 and 2021 budgets, and that was pretty much the gist of the entire study session was this, and if I didn't get the packet to you, I can, I did get it?
No, I did, the charts, yeah, I have the charts, thank you.
Okay, so you saw the presentation?
Yep.
Only thing that I would add to what's here and in those packets, I think it was reiterating the packets, is based on the final cost, everything today is based on estimates, so when they go out and they get the final cost, there could be some sliding of the last 16, or a pull-ahead of the last, you know, ones in, we're gonna do them in order, but we are trying to take in potentially some consideration for those that have really horrific LACR, there's Lambeth, Swanamere, there's not a lot of them, but there's a couple of them that are horrific, so that was the gist of the entire study session, and now we're formalizing that here in this, in this board.
Right now, these are the 29 that we have applications from, and...
Commitments from.
Um, I don't need a rehashing of all last week, but, for example, Sunflower, I see them listed once for, which was the max of $200,000 for, is that all that we're allowing them to do at one time, or?
Several of these groups have identified, self-identified as, we're in this for the long haul too, back next year, and the year after, and the year after, so Sunflower's a perfect example of that.
Okay.
Glengarry, I think is similar.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Emery.
So, this is very exciting that we're moving into this, because all the roads are getting done, but there's one here, this is just, it's minor, so we have contracts, but like one of these, Stonegate, the actual site is listed as Stonegate Oakvale, and I think it's one side of the development and the other, does that mean that they're only going to do work in the Stonegate section, or is that just listed as this way?
I'll have to go back and verify, and I apologize that I'm not familiar with all of the subdivisions yet, but if it's, it's by association, so if the actual subdivision is divided into associations, it's whatever association step forward, but I can clarify that and get that back to you tomorrow.
Thanks.
Is the question more, is it the legal name?
Right, yeah, I'm just wondering if...
The contract would be with the, whatever the legal entity is, and Stonegate may just to be a reference to, so.
I wasn't understanding that, but yes.
I live in Buckingham Place, but nobody says place, everybody just says Buckingham, but it could be the same thing, I'm guessing.
I know Stonegate's on one side of Lily and Oakvale's on the other, but they only have one HOA, but, okay, thank you.
I will verify that tomorrow and send it out to everybody.
Further comments, questions, those in favor of the first motion as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and that was one motion, so G6. Consider award a change order to the contract with Great Lakes Contracting Solutions LLC for major road, minor concrete projects for the 2019 improvement program and authorize a budget amendment.
Form of two motions, Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the following budget amendment, increase expenditures to the roads, major roads capital outlay account listed for $46,172, and a decrease in expenditures to the major roads professional services engineering account in the exact same amount of $46,172.
March, Canton Township awarded contract to Great Lakes Contracting Solutions, the amount was, of the total contract was 883,040.65 plus 10% contingency, contingency of $88,304 for a total of 971,344.71, this work was for Salts and Hanford, and additional concrete repairs for this project will extend the full amount of the original award, therefore change order is being requested in this amount, are there any questions from the board?
I'll just say, since I didn't get to say last week, I was, I had the pleasure going out with Bill, Surcek, and Mark, and last week, and looking at these two specific roads, because having been on them a lot from bike riding, I noticed some things that I didn't understand, and we had good conversations of what is, needs to be crack sealed versus what doesn't, and there were a few punchless items that we did say, yeah, this should have been done, and I see they're coming back and doing that with this item, so I think that's good, and so Jade, thanks for that.
All the work that's been allocated for this year been completed?
They're still out, they're working.
Left. Is it, is it anticipated that will be completed by November?
Yes, it'll be completed by the end of the construction season.
I, I think everybody's gonna press, get as much done as they can, and then at some point, the weather's gonna say, you're all done, go home, and then we'll come back next spring, right? So, either the money or the project runs out, or the weather runs out, one of, whichever's first, okay, seeing no further comments, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, item G7, oh, second motion, thank you, Em.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve a change order to the contract with Great Lakes Contracting Solutions LLC for the 2019 major road, minor concrete projects, construction in the amount of $46,171.94.
Second. Those in favor of the second motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, item G7, consider award a change order to contract Great Lakes Contracting Solutions LLC, same organization for major road projects, 2019 improvement, and authorize a budget amendment.
This will also be in two motions, Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the following budget amendment, increase expenditure to the major roads capital outlay account in the amount of $4,038, and then decrease expenditures to the professional services and engineering for major roads account number for the exact same amount, $4,038.
March 2019, again, we awarded the contract, the amount then was 660,747, on a 726,6821, the work was primarily for the work on lots in Canton Center, and the additional concrete repairs will expend the full amount of the original award, therefore a change order in the amount of $4,037.26 has been prepared. Are there any questions on this one? Final numbers came in, need another $4,000, everybody's good with that, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order in contract with Great Lakes Contracting Solutions LLC for the 2019 major road, ma, ma, major concrete projects, construction in the amount of $4,037.26.
Those in favor of the second motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Jade, can you ask your guys next on these RBAs, because we're gonna be seeing more of these, to make them more...
Friendly?
National logical, commonsensical.
Yes.
We had to add this extra cement here, this is why we need this money here.
Yep.
Lot of words there to say that, and...
We'll change that.
Item G8, consider approval 2019 budget adjustments.
Okay, Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the attached listing of budget adjustments to the 2019 budget as presented.
Okay, the adopted 2019 budget, the November 27, 2018 board meeting, there have been various adjustments made since then, at this time, we are asking the board trustees to approve the attached budget adjustments to the 2019 budget year, a description of the budget adjustment, adjustments is explained on the attachments, and I think it's overall a good news story in terms of, we are using less fund balance than we had originally anticipated, Wendy is here if there are any specific questions.
Yes, I would just like to hear in your words, to the tune of the dollars. At all means.
Absolutely, so if, if you look at the attachments, the general fund is the first couple pages of it, at the end of the general fund, you can show that we are decreasing a use of fund balance by a little over half a million dollars with all these adjustments, that's mostly made up of our taxes coming in a little bit higher than we had budgeted, our state shared revenue also coming in higher than budgeted, and that those two alone come up with $550,000 to the positive, there's also a lot of, you know, we're increasing some revenue here, increasing some expenses here, pretty much to offset each other, but the, the biggest chunks there are the state shared revenue and the current taxes. Fire fund, we are showing to, actually, the budget currently for the fire is to add to fund balance, so we're, it's going down a little bit, just due to some of the work that we're doing for Fire Station 2, some of the preliminary work, and that, in addition, there's a new, and Director Meyer can speak to this if there are questions to it, the state has an assessment now for ambulance assessments, it's a required, it's kind of this unfunded mandate that the fire departments now have to pay for, it has to do with Medicare, I believe, billing on Medicare, and that's $16,000 for the year, between $16,000 and $20,000, that's, so we're using about $60,000 of fund balance for those items. Police fund, we're decreasing the use of fund balance there due to some part-time wages that, we haven't hired those people for the majority of the year, so we can give back their, Community Center also, the summit, we're giving back about $30,000, minor change to the cable fund for 1,500, the DDA, that's, that's, the DDA board is in charge of all their expenses. The DDA, that's, that's, the DDA board is in charge of all their expenses, but by virtue, that has to come back to the township board for the budget impact, so part of that is to record the increase in their property tax revenue that they are giving back to the roads fund, part of that, and then also some extra expenses that they're gonna incur that they had not initially budgeted for. Really, the rest of them are fairly minor, the only other really large one is on the very last page, the post-employment benefit fund, there's a million dollar. That is the leftover money that we had in 2018, that we had transferred to the post-employment benefit fund, an extra million dollar payment to go into our pre-funding of OPEB, based on the 2018 results. So we transfer that into the OPEB fund, the OPEB fund now needs to pay that out, so we can pre-fund that, so it's, it's 2018 money that was left over, that is coming out of this fund now in 2019 to pre-fund those, those liabilities. So overall, I mean, it looks like it's a million dollar increase in use of fund balance, but that's to pre-fund our OPEB that we talked about at the end of last audit. Is there any questions?
I have a question. The transfer in from general fund to Pheasant Run for a hundred and eighty-one to seventy-five, did you, did you say that?
I did not, I did not speak to that one. That one is, there were some capital items that were needed at Pheasant Run, one of the golf courses, I'm not sure if it's Fellows Creek or Pheasant Run, a hun, to the tune of a hundred and eighty-one thousand. However, that's to keep them basically out of a deficit at the end of the year, should we need it, however, just earlier today, after this packet went out, I found out there were some other capital items that likely aren't gonna happen in 2019, it's gonna get pushed to 2020, so we may not end up needing to actually transfer this money over for the general fund, but at this point in time, this gives us the cushion to keep us out of a deficit at the end of the year, should we need to transfer it. For all of the, like, for community center fund, the summit, and golf course, which have significant transfers from the general fund each year, we always track those dollars throughout the year, and if we, at the end of the year, if we don't need to transfer those, we don't transfer the dollars over, so at this point in time, we're still asking for it, because we just found out earlier today, but that money will not be transferred at the end of the year, if it's not needed.
The, it was car paths.
I think, I think there was some overtime that's caused due to some staff, some staff, there's a number of, there's a number of items, and I believe there was...
Not capital, it was operating.
Some of each, some capital, some operating, yeah.
Can I just ask a question? So you had said that there were some police give back due to openings that we did not have. How many openings are in the police department and fire department now?
That, those part-time wages in particular had to do with some of the PSAs that we are gonna hire, some part-time staff for the, helping with, Director Meyer, you may wanna help me out.
So currently, the part-time positions that Director Trumbull refers to are public safety aides, that's a position that the board approved in our, our 2019 strategic plan. That calls for six positions that are part-time, and they'll augment our PSSOs, our dispatch personnel, and assisting in prisoner processing, and front desk. The other positions in the police department, to answer your question, were six police officers down, two firefighters down, and one PSSO down currently.
Not able to hire all the aides for this?
We, we have five of them ready to go, and they're, they're starting their training now, and we're looking for, fill the six positions.
That'll take care of just the rest, the end of the year, then?
That'll, that'll fill those vacancies for the PSAs, we're out for applications right now on the police officer position, the firefighter position, and the public safety service officer positions.
Become aware of firefighters or police officers that are good guys looking for work? No further questions, comments? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G nine, consider approval to award bid for village theater curtain cleaning and fireproofing.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to award onsite services at three-five-two-four-six U.S. Highway nineteen north, unit number one-four-one, Palm Harbor, Florida, three-four-six-eight-four, for the cleaning and fireproofing of the village theater curtains in the amount of twenty-five thousand one hundred and five dollars to be taken from the account number listed.
Support.
Okay, the request for proposals were solicited for, again, cleaning and fireproofing. There was an original RBA drafted at a much higher value, and I'm very happy to see this come through at a much lower value. Do we have any questions for Director Ohmberger?
Is it, so I'm, I'm new to this, is, is twenty-five thousand dollars kind of comparable to what the cost of cleaning, fire, curtain?
We don't, this is, this is like a once every ten-year expense, so it's not a frequent thing to say what comparable is, so this is actually the first time it's, they'll be completely removed and fireproofed since the theater was built.
Oh, the original proposal was about four times higher than this, so I'm very happy with the, the new numbers. About, no, it was four times higher than its value.
So it's the first time this has happened, okay.
I assume they're older than ten years.
Yes. They're past due to be treated.
Questions or comments? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G... Consider sale of Canton property and authorize myself to sign all the documents necessary to close on the sale.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that Canton accept the letter of intent from Gomacindo Peñeda, and authorize Supervisor Williams to sign the formal purchase agreement and any other documents necessary to complete the sale of the parcel located east of Willard Street and to the west of the ITC corridor.
Support.
This gentleman was in front of us before, he had bought the other portion directly behind his property, so this is the other piece directly behind him. There's a map in there showing that's the property Canton owns between his property and the ITC corridor, which is a big walking path already, so no value for the township here. Simply need the board to bless us to close it.
Are you, so I'm not sure in his letter if it's the red portion that he shows, but if some of it overlaps with the neighbor, do we know that?
Yeah, we actually, I think we've already sold the pieces behind the neighbor to the neighbor, if I'm correct, and so this is just, he's got the majority of it.
Yeah, that's fine.
And that, that was a concern that I had, because originally, the first fellow that came in wanted to buy everything across all, himself and the neighbors, like, no.
Yeah.
Okay. Seeing no other questions or comments, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G eleven. Consider request for new flooring at the fire station number one and associated fire budget amendment.
This is in the form of two motions. Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the request for Pro-Tec concrete coatings to replace fire station flooring in the amount of sixty-one thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars with a three thousand dollar contingency totaling sixty-four thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars.
Support.
In summary, last month, the fire department solicited proposals to redo the flooring at fire station number one. The one proposal was submitted that met the specifications required for the flooring use in the apparatus bay area and associated workrooms, from Polotech concrete coatings in the amounts as stated. We have, is she Stockline with us, Director? Deputy Director Stockline? I get so screwed up on your titles, guys. Do we have any questions? Please, Emery.
This is the floor that was bubbling up when we were there, right? You, it had just been put down, and there was large bubbles, and, okay. And I thought they came back and remedied that.
They, being Ram Construction, did not. We're currently pursuing some action with legal on that part of it. What happened was, is we were nearing the winter months where the trucks would be iced over, and we had to wash them, and the floor that was originally put down by Ram Construction was very slippery, to the point where people were falling, so what we had to mitigate that over the winter, we had a company come in and strip that epoxy off, so that the floor would, we wouldn't have any slip and fall incidents while we pursued option for repair.
Heard that one part where the trucks came in, I mean, just so there wouldn't be any more slip and falls, and this is a complete rehab of the whole floor, then?
They actually stripped the entire apparatus bay floor, so it's all bare concrete right now.
Comfortable with the vendor? I, I, you know...
I am comfortable, but Deputy Director Stockline has actively pursued the product and is far more knowledgeable on it than I.
Yeah, we went out to bid, the original bids came back, and we were not comfortable with those contractors. They had not done, performed, some of them had not performed in fire stations at all, some of them had never applied that product before, some of them still had to have training on their product before they came to apply it, so through the interview process, we eliminated them, went back out to bid, and this company here has done several fire stations, and we actually went out and visited some of the sites to make sure, product that we want.
I mean, I think, you know, seeing that currently, citizens and employees have slipped on the floor, and not only is it the right thing to do, I think from a liability standpoint, we've gotta probably follow up and redo the flooring. And I hope that we're successful in pursuing our, recouping our, our lost funds.
Every time's a charm.
Say it better. Anybody else? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye. Mr. Supervisor, I'm, I move to approve a 2019 fire budget amendment to reduce the transfer to fund balance account of, by sixty-four thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars and increase the capital outlay buildings account by the same amount.
Support.
Those in favor of the second motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G twelve. Last item this evening, consider approval request to purchase of an outdoor gun range target system.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of an outdoor gun range target system from Action Target in the amount of one hundred and three thousand nine hundred dollars with a eleven hundred dollar contingency for a total of a hundred and five thousand dollars, using funds budgeted in the 2019 police capital outlay buildings account.
Support.
Original target system was installed when the gun range opened, was pneumatic, and it failed early due to inclement weather conditions. Since then, officers have used training system as static manual targets only. The system being requested will be electric, providing reliability and longevity for the moving parts in all types of weather and conditions. The department has worked with Action Target in the past, it's comfortable with them, and proposes to deliver a quality training system. We have Director Meyer with us here this evening to answer any question the board may have. Seeing no questions or comments, oh, go ahead, Stephen.
Oh, it was Emery.
This was, this was unbudgeted then, correct? I mean, we didn't plan for it before, it just recently failed.
Budgeted, or?
This part of the range is budgeted, what, what was not budgeted was what the board approved a little while ago, and that was repair of the berm. The berm is the dirt pile, I guess is the best way to describe it, behind the targeting system, and because that range is built on an old dump, that berm sank a little bit, causing it kind of slough in, so we had to build that back up, repair that, and then repair drainage in front where this target system will go, so that we don't have any problems once the new target system is installed.
That's something about the pneumatic system failing. When did that happen?
I can speak to that in some degree over the last eighteen, nineteen, twenty, eighteen years, certainly was part of that original project, and we brought this company from Utah, and that system never worked perfectly. Never worked perfectly.
The airlines get moisture buildup, and then it freezes, and it essentially renders the system useless.
So for those who are, those who, for those who are at home, what was stated is that the, because there's no audio, Mike, that the system was implemented, it looks like the system was put into place eighteen years ago, something along those lines, it has never functioned properly, the manufacturer's from Utah, and it did not hold up to the Michigan weather.
No truth that you were actually considering having township trustees hold up the targets out there?
I don't know where you heard that rumor from.
No, okay.
That would not be correct.
Go ahead, Mr. Parker, please let the poll to me if you have a question or comment.
I don't want to have to summarize again.
Paul Parker, sixty-eight, oh, six, Weatherston, my com, and it's, it's about time. I, I had the citizens...
Oh, the academy?
Academy, and I was really surprised that our system wasn't updated. I, I'm, it's about time.
Thank you.
And this, this one was tested in the winter, and our conditions are as performed elsewhere. Yeah.
It's electric, it'd be cold, unlike airlines.
Yeah.
Ever, have we ever decided, or, I mean, I understand we've got capital needs galore in the township, but is there a reason why we've never had an indoor range? Is it just the cost?
Cost and location.
Got it.
That's a significantly higher cost, because you have to take care of ventilation. Once that range goes indoor, there's ventilation cost, the, realistically limited to twenty-five yards on an indoor range, whereas on our outdoor range, our officers train all the way out to the two-hundred yard line on rifles and et cetera, so the outdoor range is much more practical, cost efficient, and it allows our officers to operate in an environment which typically they're going to be operating in, in real circumstances as well.
Okay, seeing no further comments or questions, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Very good. Is there any staff comment? Seeing none, any public comments? Board comments?
Just real quick, though, they had the, Plymouth Canton had the school bash this weekend, beautiful weather, and, this year than last, so it was a wonderful event.
Everyone have a safe Labor Day. Safe and safe.
No further comments, those need a motion to close, adjourn.
No move.
Motion presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Be safe. Thank you.